Yes, all right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Public Meeting, November 7th, 2019. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2019 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, and posted on the bulletin board here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dade, Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Senator Amida, Committee Member Napani, and Mayor Delkor are absent. Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
President.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Julian.
Here.
Chair Sarachi.
Here.
Okay. First up, consideration of meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the October 3 regular meeting minutes?
Eligible members are Wagner, Sarachi, Julian, Scobbo, and Hestag.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the dais? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Next, consideration of resolutions. First one is Swiss Orthopedic, file number 19-PB-08-SP. May I have a motion?
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Julian, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scobbo.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Got it? Quick one. Okay.
We're gonna pull the next one, watch the attorney go.
Okay. Next, resolution for consideration, Gibraltar Rock Updates, File 19-PB-09-SP. May I have a motion?
Mr. Julian, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scobbo.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments from the dais? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Okay. We do not have any planning board business on the agenda. Next business from the floor, if there's anyone here that would like to address the planning board on any matter that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Okay? State your name and address for the record.
Joseph P. Maloney, 27 Stonewick Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey, the best place to live in America. My question is, are just cleanup questions concerning the reexamination report for the master plan, specifically Page 40 and 41 where the board made some specific recommendations in order to improve the master plan. Just wondering where we're at with that in terms of updating the master plan. It was specifically mentioned that the housing element, once we were resolved with fair share of housing, that that would be updated, and I understand that that should wait. I just want to know if there's any additional movement on the circulation element plan, if the historic commission submitted their updates to the historic preservation plan, including districts that weren't included on the original, and there's a few others here, the sustainability plan, et cetera. Just an update for myself and, I guess, for the public.
All right. Well, I know we do have a subcommittee, or a master plan subcommittee, but I haven't seen any communications from them as yet, so I don't know, Patrick, if you might.
I can kindly give you my business card if you would email our office tomorrow, and then we can supply you with the appropriate information that you need, if there's any updates at this point or not.
Okay, very good.
Yep. I'm Bob Packorman, I'm the zoning officer assistant.
Yep, know you well. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public on matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We do not have any considerations or ordinance considerations, so we will move on to this evening's application, which is Somerset County YMCA, the Hillsborough Branch, File 19-PB-16-SPV, involving Block 12, Lot 22, otherwise known as 19, or commonly known as 19 East Mountain Road in Hillsborough. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Silvaji from Labor, Silvaji, Evermeyer, and C. Cohen on behalf of the applicant, the Somerset YMCA of Hillsborough.
Is it off?
Is it on?
You could use one on the desk. Gotta just bring it close.
State three. Michael Silvaji from Labor, Silvaji, Evermeyer, and C. Cohen on behalf of the applicant, the Somerset County YMCA of Hillsborough Branch. The application this evening is, we hope to be, you know, relatively straightforward and brief. The Y is looking to construct a slightly larger than 1,000 square foot concrete pad that will house a HVAC unit that's needed for its current operations. It's really about it. The application, though, does require an amended site plan, and the use of the pad triggers two bolt variances, one for impervious surface, and then your zoning ordinances do not allow this apparatus to be located in the front yard. So we will have planning testimony that will offer justification in support of the bolt variance relief started, or required, excuse me. What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is John Gorman, who's a representative of the Y, will testify, just kind of give you guys an explanation as to what the reason is for this, and then we'll move into our mechanical engineering, and we'll finish up with our civil and planning testimony.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yes.
There's also a couple submission waivers with this application, one for community impact statement, one for environmental impact statement, and one for NJDEP application submission. And speaking with the applicant's engineer in the past, they will have testimony on these items tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. John Gorman, I'm the Vice President of Property Development for the Somerset County YMCA.
No, no, we're gonna swear in. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth?
Yes.
And just rip off some mic, state your name, please.
John, J-O-H-N, Gorman, G-O-R-M-A-N.
Okay.
Yeah, move out. So, Mr. Gorman, what's your position with the Y?
I'm the Vice President of Property Development.
All right, and what is that, what are your job duties associated with that?
Responsible to building maintenance improvement and capital improvements for all of our Somerset County YMCA's, including repairs, renovation, building, and new buildings.
And I assume in that capacity, you're very familiar with the operations here at the Hillsborough Branch?
Yes.
And, you know, the Hillsborough Branch has been around for how long?
Since 94.
Okay. And current days and hours of operation?
Currently, we're open Monday through Friday, 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Saturday, 6:30 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 6:00, 6:00 PM.
All right. And what type of, maybe you can get a couple of new members here, what type of programming does the Y offer in Hillsborough?
The YMCA offers a variety of programs, from daycare camp, after-school program, swimming lessons, including open swim, swim teams. We actually host a practice for the high school swim team, and we also offer fitness and wellness programs in addition to basketball, so everything for wellness and also social responsibility in our community.
All right. And I should have asked you, where's, in case there are board members or members of the public don't know where this location is, what's the street address?
19 East Mountain Road in Hillsborough.
Okay. And your current facility is approximately how large?
It's about 38,000 square feet.
Okay. And is all of the activities in the interior of the building, or do you have any outdoor activities?
We do have some outdoor activities, which would be part of our camp, which we actually do in the area. If you're familiar with the property, it is closest to our, between us and the DPW and our parking lot. We actually have a playground on the East Mountain side that is fenced in for our daycare, childcare program. All those activities are completed with supervision, so there's not a time when children are out there unsupervised.
So let's get right into what we're doing here. What is it actually the Y is hoping to achieve here?
We are looking to achieve the concrete pad and the fencing around it to replace an obsolete or HVAC system, V system for our pool that is beyond its usable life. We are unable to put it in its current position as it is on a mezzanine level, and we couldn't get the unit back in there, and the unit would not be able to be supported on the roof. So that's why we're requesting this pad to be put down, so that we can put the new unit on, so we can maintain the quality of the air in our pool.
Is it roughly the same size unit that's currently inside?
It's actually a larger unit.
Okay. And for the HVAC system, is that something that, does it run all the time, is it run seasonally? How often will it be in use?
It runs all the time. However, during the prime use, it would run, we'd have to have it run so that we'd exhaust the air correctly. In non-prime hours, it would basically be in more of an economy mode that just keeps the air circulating in the pool.
Okay. And the Y is intending, if we get the approval, put the concrete pad, put the unit there, and then put a fence around it?
Yes.
All right.
And also some landscaping.
All right. And the unit itself is not really near, you know, the entrance of the building, it's not near the playground or anything, correct?
No, it's not at all.
Okay. Would there really be any public access or activity on the side of the building where this is going to be located?
The only public, not public activity, the only supervised activity with the program that's in the playground in the backyard.
I don't really have anything further. We're getting into more detail with our other witnesses, but if anybody has questions from Mr. Gorman, wants to sign up?
Okay. Any questions from the dais? Our professionals.
Mr. Gorman, just one clarification. You indicated that the proposed unit is nowhere near the playground or the play area. According to your site plan, it is immediately adjacent to a fenced-in area that is notated as play sets.
To the public, I meant.
To the public.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Sorry about that. So it is located next to the playground, as I said, but it's not where public is in. It's a supervised program.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to open up the public.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness under testimony, please come up. Okay, seeing none, I guess you're done for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Joe?
Do you want to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth? I do. Can you state, tell your name for me?
Joe? J-O-E-M-I-S-T-R-E-T-T-A, Mr. Reddick.
This is a very important one, Mr. Reddick. Joe, I don't know if you've testified in front of this board in the past, but if you haven't, what's your educational background and experience in mechanical engineering matters?
I'm licensed as a PE in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York. I've been a consulting engineer. For about 40 years. I have a company in Chester, New Jersey, which we do mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering.
And have you testified in land use matters in the past?
Yes.
Okay. And you've been accepted as an expert in those other matters?
Yes.
And your license is current?
Yes.
Okay. Unless there's any objections, we'll accept your qualifications.
No. Joe, you've had an opportunity to review the site plan drawings, correct?
Yes.
And have you had a chance to review the engineer and planners' reports that were prepared?
Yes.
By the board? And so doing that, there were questions raised, and I'm referring to, I guess, Mr. Gorman's report, asking questions about whether the unit would comply with the township's performance standards with respect to noise and heat, and you've had a chance to look at it, what's your opinion on that?
It does. We designed not only the equipment, but also the fencing and the acoustical shielding that's going to be on the inside of the fencing, so that we do comply with those standards. And I know the acoustical is, your standards are the same as state of New Jersey, there's requirements for night and day, and it exceeds those requirements.
Now, is that with, is the unit itself meet those standards?
We designed the unit to meet the standards.
Okay.
We actually did the acoustic to give us a level of confidence that we would achieve these requirements.
And then, kind of in a belt and suspenders approach, what have we done? You mentioned it, but specifically with the fencing, I mean, what you said to me, acoustical material, what is that?
Well, it's a, absorbs some of the sound and also will block the sound. So our closest is, you know, I guess on South Branch, it's about 200 feet away from where the equipment would emit the noise. So we have the 10-foot fence, and we went higher than the unit, the unit's about seven feet, we're going with about three feet above, and putting acoustical blanket, basically, it's about an eighth-inch thick blanket that will go from the ground all the way to the top of the fence. On the other side of the fence, we have slats, just for appearance.
So in your estimation, that will further reduce certainly the noise, correct?
Yes.
Any concerns, or should there be any concerns, because the township stands to talk about heat or vibration with that?
No.
Okay. And what about the connection itself? I mean, is there, I think the board engineer had talked about whether there was a need for, you know, new connections or anything like that?
The existing utilities, the unit requires natural gas, electric, and those two services we can derive from the building itself, so there's no new upgrade to the service of the building. We're able to tie it into those utilities.
And the control panel, would that be within the fence there, is that going to be inside the building?
The unit is an integral unit, so the controls are onboard to the unit. There will be a remote panel in the building, so that maintenance can do the operation of the unit and turn it on, turn it off, have some control. But the controls of the unit are integral to the unit, and that will be onboard, which will be outside.
Okay. And the, there was also a question, the applicant looking for the required clear space for the equipment, and whether the plans are complying with that.
Yes. The unit, the door is required four feet around the unit. We designed it for five feet on three sides. On the other side, it's actually a little bit more, and that was really from the unit. We have to come off the top with ductwork, so we need a little bit more room than that. I think it's about eight feet or so.
Any lighting required in terms of, you know, within the compound area, if you will?
What we'll have is, we'll have an outlet out there, so if they have to do service at night, someone could put a light on, and there will also be a light, a small light on the unit that would be turned on and off for maintenance.
But again, that would be shielded by the fence and everything else, so there'd be no light admitted, so. I think, Mr. Chairman, in terms of Joe's expertise, I think we've hit upon those, although I'd certainly defer to Bob or Pat if they have additional questions we didn't hit.
I'm satisfied with the testimony regarding my letter. My only question would be with the proximity of the unit next to the playgrounds, while it's running during the day, which was previously testified a little bit more intense, will that have any impacts on any of the activity in those playground areas? Will it be too loud, or will it be humming, or will you not be able to talk to the children, and they won't be able to hear you because?
No. The sound levels on the other side of the fence will be about 55 dB during the day, which is not, you know, you could definitely talk over that, that's like office space.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple questions from my side. Tell us is the unit accessed, is there, it's going to be a door in the building to access this area, or is it going to be a gate on the?
There'll be a gate on the fence.
On the fence?
A double gate.
Okay. And then, I noticed on the detail of the plan, it didn't include any of the slats for the fence or the sheeting detail that you described, would that just be a condition of approval, that those details be added to the plan?
That's fine.
Okay. And finally, the area that's being taken up by the utility pad, there was, there used to be a ball court there for some reason, and it's new that it'll be moved, is there an idea where it'll be moved to at this point?
Mr. Kennedy will handle that.
Okay. And one last condition in my letter, was that landscaping would be provided to satisfaction. Okay.
We'll talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any questions from the dais?
I guess, yeah, the only thing that came up in the Environmental Commission, there was no environmental disturbances, but we just talked about that during construction, no trees be removed as part of the installation of the HVAC unit and concrete pad. So, and then, I'm just asking this as a question too, but in terms of just, there's a tick up in terms of impervious servicing increase from 42.2 to 42.5, I guess, back in 2000, oh, 1993, it was 41%, but now it's 15%. So as long as you're okay with that, then we just, that came up at the Environmental Commission, so I just wanted to bring that up for discussion if we need to.
Oh.
But?
For me?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you were looking at me or?
No, I'm sorry, I was looking at you, Mr. Gorman.
We'll help Mr. Gorman out. Yeah, we have, Mr. Kennedy is going to testify next.
Okay. That's all right. It was, I guess the question was for whoever could answer it.
And I guess the only question, getting back with the sound padding that's in there, so is that, you know, required to meet the current sound ordinances, or is?
The unit itself will meet the sound ordinance, which is the 65 DBA during the day and 50 at night.
Okay.
We put the sound to give us?
I'm sorry, microphone, please. Sorry.
We put the acoustical panning on the fence to give us a level of safety from, you know, the published values that we get from the equipment manufacturer.
Okay. And what's the durability? I mean, is there, since it'll be exposed to, obviously, the elements, the padding?
They, it's guaranteed for 10 years.
Okay.
Their actual warranty, which will be longer than that, but that's what they warranty it for.
Okay. One last shot. Okay. Thank you.
Public?
Oh, you know what? You're good. Is there anyone from the public that would like to, no, sorry, the shake.
And then, our final witness.
Do you want to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth?
I do.
Certainly Ronald Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y.
That's pretty dramatic.
I used to get boos.
We had that all orchestrated. Ron, again, I know many people are probably familiar with your field of expertise, but your experience, education background?
First of all, Ron Kennedy from Gladstone Design. I'm a professional licensed planner and engineer. I've been testifying since, I think it was in 1987, since I've been an engineer and a planner in the state of New Jersey. Been before this board a few times, last was the Sylvie Quarry with the solar project that was probably two or three years ago, that we did, and been involved with Roche Brook Country Club, or Golf Club, for many years, before different groups, before this town. I do testify too many nights a week before boards throughout the state of New Jersey, probably over 250 boards that I've testified before in similar types of projects to this, real estate land development applications.
And your license is current?
It is.
Both as a planner and an engineer, correct?
It is.
Okay. If there's no objections, we'll accept your credentials first, please.
Do you want to do all three boards? I got three boards tonight, is that easier, just keep it moving? Just to be expeditious, I have three exhibits. First one is an aerial exhibit with today's date on it.
A1, we'll call that, Mr. Bernstein?
Yes. Do you want to describe briefly, Mr. Kennedy, what that is? It is, it's an aerial exhibit from the state aerials, and it has an outline of the property at the intersection of South Branch Road and East Mountain Road.
Mark that as A1.
I did. Okay. A2 is overall site plan rendering, and again, it's a background of the aerial exhibit, and then it has overlaid our site plan on it. On the right side has the zoning chart and the zoning criteria.
Created when, sir?
Same date, November 7, 2019.
Thank you. You might want to not put that up just yet, because it's going to end up?
All right. And the last exhibit is in large site plan rendering, and again, similar to the application that's been before you, it just has a more detailed of the area around the actual pad itself with the piece of equipment. Label that A3, November 7, 2019.
Well, mark it as A3. At some point, you're going to need to put it up on the easel, but one of them's going to have to come down in the process.
Both up?
Yeah, for the moment, I would keep both up. If at some point you want to put A3 up, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you. As I started with Exhibit A1, it's an aerial exhibit, and north is straight up. The property in question is six acres of land, is the YMCA property itself. South Branch Road is diagonal across the sheet, and then lower left to the middle of the sheet is East Mountain Road. The property itself, as the building, which is 38,000 square foot, has the parking lot that generally is to the rear of the building from South Branch Road, but the front entrance to the building is actually in the rear. And then it also has an exit on the south side that goes back out to East Mountain Road. Exit in only on South Branch, exit out and in on East Mountain. For the most part, the property behaves like the front door is in the rear, and that's where most of the people, all the people enter the property, and the back or rear of the property actually faces the intersection of South Branch and East Mountain Road. When you look at the neighborhood, the predominant feature is the public works buildings and complex that's to the left side of the sheet or to the west of the sheet, residential across the street on South Branch Road, and a combination of residential and retail on the southeast side of the road. The property itself is all in the R-zone, that's totally in the R-zone, both the public works building as well as the YMCA. Across the street, that is in a commercial zone directly across the street. I believe it's the, it's the C1 zone that's across the street. When I go over to Exhibit A2, shows in a little farther in, you see in the brown area, the light tan, is the building itself. The expansion of this The expansion of this pad or the pad itself is shown to where my pointer is now, to the east of the building towards the front yard. And what you can certainly going to define is the front yard of both South Branch to the top of the sheet and East Mountain to the left, to the right side of the sheet. That itself is going, is proposed to be 20-foot wide by 50-foot long and it's to house this one piece of equipment. It's a single piece of equipment that's talking about putting placed on the ground. And it shows a 10-foot fence chain link that you heard some descriptions from Joe around the outside of that fence. The features that make up the area of the front yard is a tree-lined or tree area that is on East Mountain Road itself, right off the building. And then in the area my pointer is now, just to the north of that tree area, is a relatively large berm that's there. It's about eight to 10-foot high, the berm itself, that is at the intersection, goes fairly close to the intersection, but by the time it gets down near the intersection, it's back down to grade again. The berm doesn't go all the way to the intersection. The features in this front yard are the playground that was discussed, and that's an enclosed area with a fence. I think it's a four or five-foot high fence that's enclosed and that's used for the daycare center. And then there was also this little, I think they call it a play ball area or something. It's octagonal space that's maybe 20-foot across that has these boards that are about a foot and a half to two-foot high that was around that area. It's just another area that's actually going to be relocated. And on this plan, the relocation I'm showing on this exhibit, which is not on your plan, is somewhere where they do the can. So, generally in the rear side of the property, towards the public works building, is where they're proposing to relocate that area. And again, it's just these battens that are about a foot and a half to two-foot high, makes about a 20-foot octagonal area around there that they play a game inside of. So, it's a very easy, I'll say temporary type of structure that's there, that's not that high, that they're going to relocate to that area. The next exhibit, I'll take A2 down, put A3. And this actually shows, again, zoomed in farther, the actual pad itself. The darker color, shaded airy gray, is the physical shape of the piece of equipment. And the lighter area around the perimeter is the limits of the pad. There's a fence opening that's located on the bottom part of the south part, that's a double fence opening. And there's also a man door into the building, right at this location there, that provides access into this space. The fenced-in area around the playground doesn't change. There's no proposed change that is in there. I am showing physical connections and utilities that are both gas, electric, and some type of water or more of the return duct work that would go from the actual unit itself to the corner of the building here, which is where all the mechanical equipment is in the building right now. So, there'll be something that will go here. All the details of that plumbing, plumbing, the piping, it's not been designed yet, that will as they go to the construction details, but there'll be some buried equipment that would be along here. And there would have to be a temporary disturbance into that play area in order to make those As far as some basic numbers for the project, it's 119 feet from the right-of-way line on East Mountain to the proposed corner of the fence itself. And it's 130 feet from the South Branch right-of-way line to the corner, the north corner of this enclosure. Your zoning in the R-zone requires 50 feet. So, we're well within the actual setback itself, almost two, two and a half times the setback that's required. But because it is considered standalone or accessory, it's not allowed in your front yard and thus the deviation of the variance that we're considering. If it was lifted off the ground and attached to the building, we wouldn't need this variance. It would be part of the building. But it is a pad that's physically on the ground. The structure itself is not attached to the building. So, it is considered accessory and we're seeking relief. The other aspect that was talked about in the beginning of the application is the zone in the R-zone only allows for 15% block coverage. One, this is 42.3% right now, and it would add by the 1,000 square foot, it would go to 43, or 42.5%. So, a 0.2% increase in the impervious coverage. A de minimis, obviously, but one of the things that we looked at when we went back through some of the old records, when this was originally approved, is this neighborhood, this area, this region, back in the 80s and 90s, the county was doing regional stormwater management plans. And this is part of that regional stormwater management plan. So, while there's nothing that's on this property specifically, it ties into a bigger system that goes into a regional stormwater management plan. So, at least I can safely say that it's part of a plan that's already exists. It's a de minimis impact associated with that. I didn't go back and look at that plan from the original proposals there, but it is part of a regional stormwater management system that was designed by the county and the township back, started in the 80s and went into the 90s. I don't believe like 1,000 square foot is going to have a significant impact on this area. It doesn't go to a neighboring property before it gets into an existing storm sewer system. So, the typical impacts, one, we'd be worried about is I'm going to do something negatively to a neighbor. In this case, it all flows towards the intersection of those two roadways, gets into those storm sewer systems, and goes into that regional system as opposed to flowing through a neighbor property. So, all that being said, I think the applicant itself has gone through the components of those review letters that were the technical aspects, and I just want to make sure we touched on all those. Although it was a question too about a couple of things. The property itself is outside of any wetland area at all, and we had an environmental consultant come down and look at the property toward the property and had an opinion that there's no wetlands or repairing corridors on the property or within the surrounding area. We also looked at the floodplain and the mapping itself of the floodplain is there's no floodplain that's in this area. There's no mapping on the flood insurance rate map since in the zone X, which is not regulated at all. The closest area that is regulated for any floodplain at all is more than a half a mile away from this location. So, in general speak, it's a pretty high and dry property that doesn't have any of the typical environmental constraints you would see on a property, just doesn't exist I think that generally covers the review.
Let me just, while you're getting, sorry, as we spoke, what about landscaping around the exterior of the fencing? That was a recommendation, I think, at the planners' report and the environmental commission as well. Anything proposed and if not, what, why not?
Yeah, well, we didn't show in the application. We certainly agree we will. I mean, that's not a problem in doing something. It is fairly shielded from the road system itself. If you want to say where it leaks at all, either by the existing vegetation or the berm, it would be more towards the intersection of South Branch Road near East Mountain. But we would gladly put in vegetation that's along there, something that's appropriate, some evergreen vegetation around that. We can work with your planning staff on the appropriate materials that would be around there. But certainly something that can soften that, we don't have any problem with.
Applicant would allow that as a condition of approval.
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we forget, I know Mr. Julian had raised a question as well. You were here when his question was asked?
I did.
All right.
So, about the impervious coverage?
Yeah.
So, again, I would say that it's, you know, the jump in impervious coverage is de minimis for the 1,000 feet. What was interesting is the original approval was 41, you know, a percent to 42.3% that we calculated now. We went and took the original plans that were done back in the 90s and compared it, and it's pretty close, you know, to what is there today. So, I don't see a significant deviation or an expansion that was done without site plan approval. It looks like out of everything I've always critical, one island may have been taken out when they put the solar panels in. But everything else is pretty consistent with the loading area, with the parking spaces, with the sidewalk spaces that were in front of the building. But when we used our technology today as opposed to a scale back in the 90s, that's what the number's coming out to, is that percentage. But again, comparing the originally approved site plans to what's there today with our updated plan, it is pretty close to what's there in the, what was approved originally, other than maybe one parking lot island.
Yeah, I mean, it's a de minimis increase, increase for now. I mean, it says it was originally, the impervious coverage for the site was 15% in 1993. I don't know why it was that back then, but since that time, I mean, you've had experience with the stormwater and so this is not going to affect it, in my opinion.
It looks like like the original approval, they did get a variance for it.
Yeah, that's what I would imagine.
For that aspect. Obviously, it was different than a residential house.
Right.
On a half-acre lot, you would look to have a 15% block cover.
Yeah.
But in this case, it was a commercial-type development for this institution and a variance was granted to 41%.
Right. That's what caused that increase?
It did.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
But we still have this little delta from the 41% that was approved now when we measure it's 42.5. So, that was the explanation that there's something a little off from those numbers lately.
Right.
From what we calculated today versus what was approved back then.
Understood.
And while you're looking to just, any vegetation, trees to be removed? I know that was a question both in the planner and the environmental commission's report.
Yeah, I, I'll say this, there's no need to have those, but it should be a condition of approval so a contractor doesn't come in and do something that we certainly don't expect. But yeah, there's no reason to have disturbance of that existing vegetation.
So, we can agree Mr. Bernstein is a condition if that's the direction you want to go with it.
Yeah, applicant's willing to accept that, yes. As far as the, you know, the two variances, again, I'm going to say is the proofs that we're doing is we're looking at this as a C2 variance for this. Obviously, the use is permitted, we're consistent with that use. We're not trying to change that use. We're not adding intensity to the use. We're just trying to replace a piece of equipment. And as you heard in the testimony before, the solution after they looked at the different alternatives was this as the best solution for the property, to put that in the front yard and that additional 1,000 square foot pad. And again, our proof has to be that the benefits of the deviation would have to substantially outweigh any detriment, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and the zone plan. And we have to certainly look at the negative criteria on impacts associated with that. As we, all the professionals discuss on this is it is one of a location that's chosen based on the circumstances that are there. The historic development pattern associated with the rear of the building from a planning standpoint is actually the front of the building as far as its behavior. And that's where all the access comes in. That's where the people park and they walk into that building and most of the pedestrian flow goes through that area. The back of the building is circumstantial, but it faces the two public road systems that are associated with this. And that's where we're putting it in back of the building as opposed to the front of the building, but it's on your two frontages. The good news is we're two and a half times the setback that's required by the zoning ordinance that while it's in the front yard, it is screened by existing vegetation, a berm that's there. We're putting fencing around it with a fabric and we're agreeing to put additional screening that's there. So, certainly the protection of the zone plan and the impacts to the community are minimized. And what our plan is trying to propose is that after this is approved, built, the vegetation to put in, the screenings put on, you're not going to notice this driving by, both on South Branch Road or on East Mountain Road. And that's our intent of the design that we're really trying to accomplish here. As far as the additional impervious coverage, similarly, it's de minimis that we're trying to add on there, keeping the pad as relatively tight as possible to the building. We don't need a long path to connect the two to a door or an area that needs to back a truck up to. It's just the area around that, so we're trying to minimize that to the greatest extent practicable. We understand that it is part of a regional master plan so that it gives a little comfort that it is getting some treatment that is going to that area. And as I stated before, the discharge of that water in that area is, goes to an existing storm sewer system in those two public road system and doesn't travel across a neighbor property. And I think that is something that's beneficial as well, that we know that it's being captured at least and going to that storm sewer system. So, I do think that the combination of those elements, the board can look on, the fact that it really doesn't have any substantial impact to those neighbors, to the zone plan, and to your zoning ordinance. So, we'd look to have this board feel positive towards approving what I think is a pretty simple aspect of the addition to the property.
I have nothing further for Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy, just one question. During your testimony, you mentioned that there's going to be duct work coming from the unit and going into the building, of course. How's that going to be, is that going to be exposed at all on the outside?
I'm not sure it's duct work. I think Joe may say duct work. I understand there's piping on below grade, but we can ask if there's going to be above-grade duct work. I don't know that.
There, there's a return and a supply duct that will come off the top of the unit.
Okay.
And go across into the building.
Okay.
Will that be above the fence?
It will be above the fence. But we made it that it's round duct and it will be painted to match the building. So, you know, we've tried to do everything possible to really minimize, you know, the aesthetics of it.
That'd be acceptable?
Okay. I do have a couple of engineering questions. No. Yep, not pure engineering, mechanical engineering. Because I know you had mentioned it was natural gas to run the HAs. So, so the exhaust for the system, where's?
It would be, there's a furnace.
Right.
That would be approximately here.
Okay. And is that just going straight up or is it...
There's no chimney, you know.
Okay.
It's like, this is very similar to a HVAC conditioning unit you can see on the roof. There's not a stack or anything that you're going to see a chimney off of.
Okay. And as far as the drainage for the condensation, where's that?
Right now, we have it that it would be just going onto a drip pan on the concrete and just go onto the soil.
Okay.
And that condensate is really just from the dehumidification of the air.
Right. From the pool area. So, I know it gets pretty humid in there, so.
Right. And that's exactly, the old system, besides it being old, only had heating and ventilating. This will have cooling, which allow to dehumidify so we can keep the space at a good relative humidity, not too high.
Okay. Okay, any questions from Dave's?
Yeah, I mentioned the fence before and it's a double fence. Is there a lock on that?
There won't be a lock.
Right. Okay, I'm just curious. So, it'll always be locked?
Yes.
Right? And then a follow-up on Mr. Gorman's question. I think you mentioned there's like the piping like over the fence. Before, there was talk about it might disturb some land near the play area, but is, will it also disturb some land in the play area?
We have to bring the gas generation and there'll be electric that'll be brought across there from where the mechanical room in the building is.
Well, it's actually, the electrical is coming inside the building, which is down here. The electrical room is, is this south?
Yes.
South part of the building. It's going to go from that mechanical room up into the attic, run along in the attic, and then come out where it needs to come to the unit. And it's going to follow, we're going to have duct work, as you said, coming off the top going into the building. There's going to be a stanchion that's going to hold it. We're going to run the gas piping and the electric conduit on that stanchion underneath the duct work into the unit. So, you won't even see that from, you know, it'll be below the 10 feet.
All right. And a lot of that's inside as well. So, there's not going to be a lot of work outside near the play area where I was worried about safety and make sure it's closed out and all that.
The electrical or the gas. The gas comes from the north side and again is in the attic. And we're going to tap into a orange line in the attic and again come across where the stanchion is into the unit.
Okay.
So, then it sounds like there'll be less disturbance on that ground when they first talked about it. They were talking about putting some pipes there. So, from this plan that Joe's talking about as it evolves, it's less physical ground disturbance that would be there temporarily.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Anyone from the public that would like to question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple.
Oh, you have? I'm sorry.
And maybe I didn't...
And maybe I didn't hear it, Mr. Kennedy, and maybe wasn't. Did you have Mr. Ray Euro's report of November 1st? I'm playing engineer tonight. If you look at page two at the bottom of site requirements, number five, has that been addressed?
Yeah, the original plans that we first looked at were nine-foot. Now, the actual unit itself's only seven and a half, the physical unit itself, so we'll adjust our plan to be seven and a half. We talked about it, we still think we want that 20-foot-wide pad itself, but the physical unit itself got smaller than the original concept that we saw.
If we take a look at the next page, number six.
That's mine.
Number seven, I know there's been testimony regarding the fence and the chain link. I think the question is, can we have a little testimony on or the note as to how it's going to interact amongst the chain link and the acoustic fence?
Yeah, so when I look at that information, the chain link fence is going to be 10-foot high. It comes in rolls of six-foot, you know, when you looked at that information. So it'll have to be cut for a roll of six-foot, and it'll have to be cut four-foot to go. And it shows on those details how it's lashed to the actual chain link fence. So there'll be a series of grommets that'll be lashed to the chain link fence that'll have a stainless steel type of thing that'll be attached to the fence in that detail. When we looked at it, that's in detail. But the six-foot, that's the rolls it comes in, and it's rolled out, so another roll will have to be put on top of it, have to be butted together and cut to that four-foot height for 10-foot. But the intent is, is all 10-foot would have the acoustical panel on. It's not intended to only have six-foot, the top four-foot to be just chain link. Intent is all 10-foot would have that acoustical panel.
And the other two items are number 13A and 13B.
I'd have to ask Joe on this, but again, just what he said is there'll be some work, the plumbing work, duct work, electrical work, gas, some of those utilities would be in there, but there's no other big changes associated with it, other than the connection into the existing space that's there with that piece of the control panel. They talked about the embedded, the unit itself has been proposed, and there'll be some other, some other things that would be in the building.
I think the issue is more 13A, the security, the equipment and access.
Yeah, it'll be a double gate, and as stated, there'll be a lock on that gate, and that's the only entrance into that space.
And maybe it's a question for Mr. Gorman. Who will have access, physical access, to the concrete pad HVAC unit?
That would be myself and/or the facility director, and then any of the maintenance staff, which we would have with regards to our HVAC contractor. Otherwise, it would remain locked at all times. The key would be in with that, and in the lock area. So, yes.
Anything else, Paul?
No.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Last bite at the apple.
Public.
From the public. I see the head shake now, so. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kennedy was our final witness. I hope that we've been able to answer the questions that your board professionals presented, as well as the environmental commission. I think the project, looking at your ordinances, certainly warrants an amended site plan approval, and I believe Mr. Kennedy offered some expert planning testimony that would justify the bulk variance for the impervious coverage, as well as the variance to allow the accessory structure to be located in the front yard.
Okay.
I'd just comment, I think you did a pretty good job on that. It seems pretty good.
Thank you.
So unless there's any objections, I will ask Mr. Bernstein to propose a resolution for us to consider.
Mr. Chairman, it should be approval of the application for Somerset County YMCA Hillsborough Branch, 19 PB16 SPV Block 12, Lot 22, at 19 East Mountain Road, approving the applicant's request for a minor site plan approval, see bulk variances and waivers, as well as all comments made by the board's planning consultant and engineer, and all conditions agreed upon by the applicant during the pendency of the testimony.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion, too.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, rule call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Pisa?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Like Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Russell?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Good night. So we have no other applications. Taking a look at our agenda or upcoming meetings.
You will have, you will currently, Mr. Chairman, have applications for the two meetings in December. Don't want to deprive you of a full calendar for the rest of the year. One will be a repeat of a prior approved application, and the other one appears to be, and I can only hope, the infamous hotel on the Brookhaven site.
It's been the bulk of my career in a township committee.
Yes, well, yours and mine.
Okay, so the day, our next two meeting dates appear to be December 5th and December 12th. Yeah, again, just please let the planning office know if anyone's unable to make it. I know we're getting, you know, midst of holiday season, so I know schedules start to get tight and get to have some activities going on, so. So with that, I am going to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I were adjourned. See you all on December 5th. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.